Call this community as a whole meeting to order and remind the audience that it's a full participation event. We don't second our motions and anybody who wants to raise their hand and take part in the discussion is welcome to do so. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councilor Doherty, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor. And tangible capital assets presented to us this morning by Roxanne and Doug or just Roxanne? I'm sure they're...
Sure, I'll start off.
Tangible.
Yeah, I'll start off. So what were we required to do by our, under our annual audit? One of the recommendations from the auditors was to have a tangible capital asset policy. And this sets the thresholds for us to consider when we're budgeting and how we're going to be funding these sources, whether it's from capital or from operating reserves. It also sets a threshold for us to locate our asset management plan and how we're going to be putting in life expectancy on our assets. What Roxanne, our chief financial officer, has done is basically developed a policy that has allowed us to meet the legislative requirements. It's very flexible in the way that it works for the city to consider the life expectancy of our assets because those, as we know through our asset management planning, these things can vary from time to time. We can have an asset that's fully depreciated and it can still have 100% of life left there. So she's left a lot of room in there for that. The other thing that it does is gives us something to work from because we really actually have to have something to work from from a policy perspective. So I'll turn it over to Roxanne and talk a little bit more about some of the other details within the policy, but keeping in mind that this is our legislative requirement to have this policy from piece out. And now that we are, now that we've done that, we've actually satisfied our external auditors, our auditors who are outside of the body come in and on behalf of our legislative requirements, they come in and tell us that we have to have this audit done and they will get this in order. So basically.
Thank you, Becky. As Doug mentioned, it's a framework for our tangible capital assets and it ensures that we treat our assets consistently each time that we are putting them into our inventory of assets. It gives some definitions of some different types of assets. It goes into financial accountability, which what the departments are responsible for with regard to protecting the assets and recording the assets. It goes into the finance department and how we update the policy, how they're valued, how we classify them. So the big thing is breaking them down into classifications and the primary classifications would be general government, fire services, transportation, sanitary, storm sewers, the basic ones. And then the secondary classifications would be the actual asset types such as land and buildings, furniture, equipment, et cetera. It also goes into segmentation and pooling. So which assets, if we're building a storm sewer, which type of assets would be involved in that? Breaks it down into the pipe and et cetera and gives us useful lives on each of those. It also talks about how to deal with work in progress, write downs, write offs, settlements, trade ins, disposals, and how we present them on the financial statements. So our biggest, our biggest goal here is to set the framework and to be consistent with our assets.
And if I could add, this is a very, we didn't make up this policy. This is policy that had been basically sort of through from other local governments around the city that have met this piece of requirement. And you know, because we were attending it, we basically grabbed one and made it ours. So it did, it meets all of those expectations and it is, it did take a lot of work from Roxanne's perspective to make sure that we had it flexible enough to meet our current needs because I think that's what some of these counties have, they hamstrung themselves with their, with their own policy requirements and this leaves us a little bit of flexibility to consider other options.
Okay, from start with the motion, we bring this forward to the October 28th regular meeting. Councilor Kendall, Councilor Doherty, we don't need a second one. Discussion questions? Councilor Jenner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, you obviously, it mentions its related policies, policy number 802 and 805, why would those not include it in this package?
I'm sorry, I'm not, did I get anything from that?
It, it states within this policy that related policies to this are policies number 802 and 805. I'm curious as to why they were not included in this package.
Probably because it's about 25 pages already, but yeah. So.
And Mr. Mayor, just to answer that, the, the policies that are related to this are, they're definitely there. There's other policies within the documents that we relate to this as well. I think this is for reference numbers. So you know, like you said, we're not...
Do purchasing activity.
Exactly, purchasing policy, those are the documents that currently exist. We could saturate this document to make it very thick with other documents.
Because it interacts with a lot of things that we do.
Exactly.
Yeah. Councilor Shaglin, was that enough detail or did you feel that that's a missing component of this?
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious as to why it wasn't included as it's been mentioned within the document.
Okay, but you're satisfied that you can resource those items?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Further, further discussion? I'm, I'm wondering, what were the slippage points where, that we could have gone either way in terms of things? Is it the dollar value of identifying something as either a operational or asset?
Operational or capital?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there is. So those thresholds were set in the, in the policy on, based on the best practices provided by the, by the industry. So, so the finance people will get together in their world and they'll say, this is how long it should, this is where it should come, whether it becomes, whether it's tangible, whether you can actually touch it and feel it, then it becomes a, a potential capital item. The other piece is operational, if it's a report in that, in that nature. So it's not something that the community is going to see or you're going to be able to touch and feel. That's kind of where they separated those pieces.
So something like a weed eater would be, is that operational or asset?
But it would be...
Depending on how much you pay for it?
If it's less than $5,000, it would be operational.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all those little items that we use and abuse that break down whatever are not assets.
So sometimes we have to pool some things together to achieve a capital component in that because we might have a capital improvements on a building that are, I mean, what are our numbers sitting here for those, Roxanne? Generally it's under $50,000. Do we school $50,000?
No, we actually went really low. We, for infrastructure assets, we make $10,000.
So what I've seen before in other municipalities, they hamstrung themselves because they said, well, it's a $50,000 threshold. So therefore it become operational, therefore it affects taxation. If you, if you do it under a capital piece, it doesn't affect the taxation because you can draw it from your reserves to do that repair. So some municipalities have their threshold for buildings setting at $10,000 and we all know that $10,000 for a building won't go very far from how it comes. So, so by, by having it up too high, it can actually hamstring it and affect taxation. So that was, that was the ability for us to, to maneuver that so council can make the decision if they would like to do the project or not and then where we would fund it from. So.
All right. Clarifies it for me.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Any audience questions? Okay, so on the floor is to recommend this to the 28th of October, gives us a few weeks to reconsider our decision or to understand it better. All those in favor? Both carry. Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is the Agents for Property Owners, Cram Holdings Limited and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints temporary use permit application. And again, we're looking for a recommendation from council to, to support the temporary use permit and to refer the matter to October 28th. Right, bring it to council. Councilor Doherty. And open for discussion. Councilor Kendall.
I just have one question, worship. With this being a temporary use situation, is there, does it qualify under the tax exemption by law for the next three years? Or is that partly taxed?
I don't think so. We cannot, this has to be out of law.
So, Mr. Mayor, what we can do is we can get that information and bring it back to, to council, but I think that Roxanne has directed, has to be approved by council later on to be added onto that.
Onto that tax exemption list that we've got on. Any questions?
Excuse me, my understanding is that because it's a leased property, that the taxation applies to whoever the property owner is?
Which would be...
Yes, well, no, it's actually the other, the landlord owner is somebody else, but the, but what happens is council has that ability to make that decision, but I don't think that, you know, based on that situation, because it's being leased, they, they're leasing it, they don't own the building. The church may own the footprints of the building and they would get that tax exemption on that change. So, so no, I don't think at this point we'd wait, but we can look into that and answer the questions. So I hope to council.
All right, so acceptable, we'll figure it out.
As well, the concern is that, that it would incur a delay in making the decision. If that's not the case, then no, I don't think.
I, I'm not seeing it as a deal breaker here. Anyone else see it that way? No, the motion's on the table to send it to the regular meeting on the 28th. Further?
Well, just, just to clarify, I think as it stands right now, the building is being leased, so therefore it would be, would remain status quo as far as taxation, which doesn't affect anything. And that was my question, is that there hasn't been any application to change up at this point? So anyway, I'm fine, I just wanted to ask the question.
Further? Further question, this is to send it to the October 28th regular meeting, council. All those in favor? Both carry. And we're down to reports and discussion and this next item is an exciting item, a project that would be an exciting thing to be part of our community and I would actually ask the council wire to explain.
I attended the 2013 Federation of Canadian Municipal Officers Conference in Vancouver, in the end, with the mayor and Councilor Doherty. One of the programs or sessions that I sat in on was a workshop for young adults and municipal government. And it was moderated by an FCM board member, Erin Holden from Churchill, Manitoba, very young woman. And it looked at the roles of young people and young professionals in our municipal government lobbying and, and work careers, job careers for, for different aspects. At one point, you know, they opened the floor to, to speak with the delegates that were there and one of the issues was the challenges that faced young women in, in local government. And we heard all sorts of stories and Councilor Shaglin, you were in attendance as well at that session. It was well attended. It was interesting to see the number of young people that were here in attendance at FCM as well across Canada. They introduced a program and we have circulated some of the background information for you. And FCM does have a brochure that they provided at the conference and it's called Women in Local Government. And I do have a bunch that I can circulate as well to give you an idea. At any rate, they have received funding from the Women's Institute of Canada for a pilot project across Canada for the next year, for the coming year. And the pilot project is designed to bring into local government's atmosphere, young women, young girls between the ages of 16 and 24. And the, there's only seven communities across Canada that have been considered. So I, the applications were open. I thought, well, Ground Forks could certainly be a candidate. We have a number of organizations in our community that are, work with young people and job employment, Community Futures, and we have a women's center. We have a, an onsite campus here, outreach for St. Alfred College. So I, I made an application online. Ironically, I got a phone call for an interview in July from Melissa Newman. And so I had an interview processed within the end of July and the result is we received confirmation that City Ground Forks has been selected as one of the seven pilot projects across Canada for the Head Start for Young Women program under the funding that's been provided to FCM by the Institute, Women's Institute of Canada. And from there, I provided the background information. I consulted with our, our CAO, Mr. Allen, and he's, he's, wanted me to bring this forward today to receive council's support because although it is a funded program at their end, there isn't a lot of money on the table to conduct the program in the communities across Canada. So I'm looking for council's support this way.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that too, we had a very interesting meeting with Melissa on the phone today. And what they were actually looking for is potentially a project that, once the, the group is selected in the community by, by, potentially the leader, Council wires, it would be, it would be, they would want to look at different options, maybe going through the election process, developing maybe a project that they would help to see from Cradle to Raven, they could basically participate in our budget process to, to help with that. So they might, we might find something to simulate in younger minds in the community to, to want to work on that project on behalf of the community. So it's really interesting, the options were open and they were, there were a whole bunch of areas to go and, and we are, as I said, one of the seven communities across Canada that are selected to participate. So they did advertising for us as well from a, from a branding perspective and also from supporting women leadership. It's a, and, and it's a very, very common cause right now and I think it's an important one too because we can blame it, take a role in our local governments and it's important for us now to, to work with these programs. The whole thing inspires someone more to commit to the organizations.
Said well as a parent of girls. I, I'm interested, it's after school, like 18 to 24, it's kind of out of school, but...
You're worshiped at 16.
12, 16, so it would be that great level.
Yes. And I've already spoken with Jennifer Whitmore at St. Alfred College and we're going to be engaging with Helen Argue at the High School. And we see this as, as you said, there is a project at Ebalto that, but young ladies pick out their, they, they pick their project. And Melissa will be visiting the community once they're ready for the kickoff meeting, first session. She will be visiting with us here November 20th. And the next closest location is just outside of Edmonton.
Beaumont.
Beaumont. But they're in an election process right now, so.
Yeah, basically, that's Beaumont, London, Ontario, Ottawa, Ontario, small community of the parrot, but we're back in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And ours, so there's only seven of them, so.
It seems like a really worthwhile thing with a game, bring us out in front of a lot of other smaller communities that's progressive and forward thinking. I assume that there may be some resources involved in this as it goes along, either in kind or, or some, some support financially.
There's a small amount.
There's a small amount, but if we can tie it into, for instance, if we tied it into our budget process, we would be doing the project anyway that they might be able to work on and it wouldn't cost us anything that way, but they would be able to, there'd be some small administrative impact components, but there is, there is a small amount that might be available from the federal government as well. So we would just have to include it into our financial plan and that would be our legislative process that we can follow.
Okay, I'm quite comfortable with moving it along. So what we might be doing here is recommending it to tonight's regular meeting, we would make a more formal commitment in public.
And referring it to the 2014 license.
And referring it to the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor?
Yes.
All those in favor? All those carry. That's exciting, I'll, that goes forward.
Yeah.
I also raise two girls. And the monthly reports from department managers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into the staff reports, I wanted to touch base a little bit on the workshop that you and I attended in Richmond on Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday last week. And just let all the council know and the staff that we had an opportunity to present a, the Ground Fork story and what we're doing with asset management. We had, we represented this from the, from the federal government and Glenn Brown from the provincial government, who's the executive director for, for the asset management component of the provincial government's objectives. So, so we got in front of the, the group and the, there was two presenters, there was the City of Golden and there was the City of Ground Forks. We, we had representation from, I believe there was 75 to 80 people there, maybe a little bit more, the ballroom was full. And, and our mayor got up after Mayor Benke and she presented the, their story and our mayor got up and, and you know, honestly, you know, from her, the whole feedback I got, we got a, people didn't realize that we were so far up in front of the game. They were very impressed, they were coming around to me after the fact saying, wow, you know, saying to the mayor, what a great, what a great presentation. And I gotta say to our council that you represented very well because the, they changed the format on the mayor last minute. He was supposed to be on the panel discussion and now he had to do a presentation. So on his feet, he presented and the, the audience was very impressed. And then provincial government folks, Glenn Brown came, came up to me and were talking about it and recognizing where we are. But one of the key components out of that that I took was if we don't have the water meters in the ground, we're not even going to be considered. Just so we know that, if we decide to not go with water meters, there's not a chance of getting any funding. So that was pretty, made pretty clear to us. That investment and just so we know that water meters are also for tracking water for the future. So we really know what we're doing across Canada because we have to inventory this, like we pay it for granted so much, but at the end of the day, the, the meeting, the feeling of the meeting was very positive. I felt as though, you know, we've kind of done as much as we can to get ourselves up in front of this grant. And I think that we're there. I think it was just a couple of follow ups, but I felt that it was a very positive situation for City Ground Forks, so.
And I appreciate Mr. Allen's approach. He knew a lot of people there, this is his background, you know, we have him being part of various organizations, LGMA, that kind of stuff. And so he knew a lot of people and was going to have that opportunity to be introduced to the group and to have it set up. And he was there really every coffee break, hitting the right people. He worked really hard at it and I do, I think it was very positive in that hopefully we'll get some recognition in the first round of funding, so.
And further, the mayor was, they thought that the mayor was the CEO of TransLink. When he got onto the, we got onto the Skydream, this one fellow said, are you the CEO of TransLink or something? They held the door for him because the new TransLink had closed on him, so it was good. So further to the management reports and I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody has on that. Ross, let me go through the reports if you can and then ask any questions. So for the manager of operations, you see the report next on the key elements of the leveling and the, they saw it as in the 80 parks, we're ready to go now. We're going to be asking people to stay off until early spring, until the managers have an opportunity to assess it. We anticipate that it's all going to be perfectly ready to go. We're continuing on with the curb stop installations, the, the electrical balls that were installed at the heliport, the new heliport that's been installed with the, through the, through IHA. Our departments have to sell in the market all so we don't get our wires. There's some sidewalks been repaired, some leaks on the, a minor leak on the reservoir. We had the 700 customers that were affected by our electrical storm, or by the storm, the electrical department were affected. And the guys got that all in order. We, and the hanging baskets now have come down, the planters are all going to come in. And the next step is going to be that the, the lakes will be installed in the trees in, through Central Avenue and then we'll see a small amount of the Christmas baskets that we've got as part of our basket contract this year, is there'll be some Christmas baskets in the downtown core and, and the lakes on the trees, so. The building inspection services and building services.
Comment on, on the first report? I was confronted by a citizen the other day who insisted that we had more staff, that he was accusing me of having, more workers, because they are out there doing a very visible and excellent job in the community, huh?
And, and we have, Mr. Mayor, in some respects, we use some of our capital money to bring in the capital tools to fulfill some of those projects. We'd either contract that out or bring it in, but we've kind of struck a nice balance, but no extra permanent staff.
No, I told him that was just a visual.
The building inspector and building services. So following up on several complaints, we've had some complaints regarding people in the parks and in other areas. Working on some bylaws, following up on the building inspection course.
Excuse me.
Complete the lease for Habitat for Humanity, which the work is continuing on that property as we speak. Building permit fees, continually transferring those files because we're actually going to be digitizing those and putting them onto our system. So as there are five new permits for September, you can see that they're considered there. Corporate administration. So obviously preparing the council amendments, which is a lot of work. The department compiled and distributed weekly summaries. Corporate services, iCompass training, so that's getting all of our, all of our, if you will, all of our documents under one roof. When it comes to the ability to search and confine them, it'll help it, make it easier for the public to search our documents as well. And even if we get a free member registration request, it'll streamline that process for our department. And, and obviously dealing with the relocation, and I'll dig into that a little bit more through the fire. Management, development, engineering, development services, the deification downtown, they continue to move along with the conduit piping is going in for the, for the power and the irrigation for the hanging baskets. And, and we've selected the keys to go around the trees downtown as the, you're going to see the slide in the tree wells. So around the base of all the trees, I'll see the slide, so we have that stability to, to share that with more people. The construction of the new liquor store is still ongoing. The water supply strategy, still working on that. You can obviously see there's a lot of things underway there, the asset management project, still finishing that off and we're expecting a, a report to come to council in early November. Fees and charges by law, we're going to have that all wrapped up here shortly. It's been a very big undertaking. The, we're expecting the multi-use pathway project, we'll have some more information coming out on that shortly. It should be paid soon. The animal aware program, we're just working on those components related to that. We finished out the communication strategy, we're just been talking to the CBT about options that are, that are just there. 72nd Road closure completed, that's the end of the property that we now, we close as part of the Habitat for Humanity property that has now been, title's been raised and it now actually sits in the legal law. We've received a work plan for the tax exemption program and I'll, I'll talk to council a little bit further about that in the budget process. And then the emergency water, by, of course, we're expecting the gen sets to be here shortly and to be installed hopefully by the end of this month, so we'll have that component completed, so our emergency wires are probably being ordered. Fire, fire department, they have 38 calls in September, 28 for fire, oh, sorry, 12 for fire, two for rescue, 24 first responders. Obviously the structural fire at City Hall, the structural fire at Roxelle, the old campfire tunnel. And you can see in this report, there's a, normal fire activities and training that are underway and yeah, obviously very busy with that as well. We've got some training work right now going on for the Emergency Response Center for Communications. That workshop is this week. We'll have three representatives over at that. And then there's a fire, fire department workshop in Koma today, or for tomorrow. Chief Financial Officer, working on the fire, fire insurance process. So this is a new wrench that was thrown into her, her work plan was the, the insurance process, which is, she's handled extremely well, but a lot of intricacies to deal with preparing the fire. Permissive tax exemptions, so that'll be council tonight, I believe, Roxanne, yes. So we're, we're going to be setting up a procurement budgeting workshop for October for all of our staff, so they're all on the same page and everybody in the community will understand from, from our perspective, what we're doing from a budget process, so that'll be coming through for council. Then like I said, that schedule will be coming up shortly. Expecting that to be hopefully completed by the end of this week, if not, early next week. And that'll give council the opportunity to talk about those things. And we can add them into our community, the whole workshops, and we can talk a little bit more about that, so the community can sit in all of our budget discussions. Our RFP for auditing services actually was re, was re, we have it, it's closed, but we resubmitted it and we resubmitted the audit, the, the RFP for this due to the fire, wanting to make sure we did, we weren't missing any documents from the money. So we put it out there and it's now been resubmitted, it's for the auditing services. Airport hangers, these, as you can see, there's a list of things that are done here. And yeah, any questions on that? And then I have... And then I have just a little bit of an update on the fire. What we're going to be doing is, through Sarah and at the Dianos apartment, we're going to be sending out internal communications now for all of council to have, and you can share these if you, if you see fit. But the internal communications will be all the steps that are going to be undertaken for the restoration of City Hall and the planning process, everything's going to be undertaken, so. The emergency is over, now the process is, and you'll see on those documents, if any administrative questions that they can ask myself on, and they can refer any other questions out to, and obviously from council's perspective, addressing any of those questions. If you have your verbiage, the communications will be, be set up and they'll all be established or given. And it should be, it should be very clear of the process of implementation, so we're hoping to have that as open as possible.
So a motion to accept the reports. Dr. Dorby, only need one. Hearing none, all those in favor. So that brings us to the gallery, are there any questions?
Oh, no, Nigel, you're sorry.
Turning my back.
The, the worship, thank you very much for offering the floor. Firstly, I, I thought the open house by the city hall was a good ploy because it showed, in my view, the city is trying to extend a welcome hand to the citizens to say, hey, come and see what we're doing and see what disaster we've had and so on, and I thought that it was, it was a nice trick, I think, I thought it was a good idea. Main reason why I'm here is because of the report in the little paper on the subject of MNBC, Multi-Material British Coalition. And I, it's, I read the report and it leaves more questions than it answers problems. And having been to the UCBM, I thought you might be able to expand a little bit about this because, as I see it, I think we've got a, as has already been mentioned, and I apologize for being late, but it's already been mentioned, we've got our act together regarding, I think, waste management. It's not perfect, but we're working on it. And all I can say is MNBC are going to come in and be a, a free fly in a small pot of wick, I think. And it's going to be, I suspect, a bit like ICPC, where all of a sudden, they're going to lord the situation and force people to do things and force municipalities to do things which, by honestly, really is municipality, probably responsibility. And they say it quite glibly, oh, it, it's not likely to cause any increase in costs, et cetera. Well, there's going to be a saving, they claim of half a million. A good guess, I suspect, picked out of the air. When they put themselves into a, an organization, I've no doubt there needs a number of staff to do things, and so it goes on and on and on. And we were going to be, I suspect, directed because it's a B C provincial legislation. And I note also that the premier is not very happy about the whole situation right now. She says it's, you know, it's, there are concerns. I'm wondering if you could expand on this, please?
I wish I could, but, Mr. Allen, I, I know that there's a, there's a lot of discussion going on right now in the province and I believe that at UVCN, there's a task force that has structured its representation from many municipalities, and I believe the closest representative is the mayor of Pennington. The process still needs some clarification for a lot of municipalities. There is, there is a, a form of this, as you said, Nigel, there's an uncertainty to it. We're hoping that the task force is going to clarify a lot of these uncertainties from all the different perspectives because it's a big piece coming down regarding how we handle and separate and who's responsible for the costs of these things. So whether it's done at the manufacturer's level and there's almost like a deposit to put on garbage as it goes out, and you have the ability to bring it back to that location. You know, this is, this is the question, is where this is going on. And so you, you're not alone with sharing these concerns, the regional district handles this component for our municipalities through a contract service. So we're expecting to get some more information back from the regional district, once there's more information available to our council, and we'll be looking for, for that to be presented to our community. And I reflect your concerns, I think at the regional, maybe we've had a couple of presentations from the environment committee and they have not been all that inclusive. There were issues of contracts and overlapping contracts, that we're holding back certain actions. But no, I, I agree that we need more information on it and I'm expecting more from the region.
Thank you. Follow up on the thing, I think there's something in the paper as well about 68th Avenue is going to be one of the first ones to be attacked regarding re-walking.
Or multi-service project.
Yes. Might I, I've already said several times that raised intersections keep vehicles speed down and it's been acknowledged, I think, in the paper and, and various other places elsewhere, that's one aspect. I've also mentioned roundabouts, which has been heard, but maybe not accepted. I've also mentioned stop signs many times and I know that, his worship, the mayor agrees with me that we've got a plethora of stop signs. I'm wondering if, as a, as a trial, we could modify 68th Avenue to include some of these new ideas, and I don't say new ideas, they're not really. I've had the fortune of living in four different countries and had the experience of having three different driving examinations in, in various countries as well, so I think I, I speak, and have also having the situation where you obviously, where we obviously drive on the right and in Britain, they drive on the correct side. I mean, it is a, an important factor that I, I can, I've seen it all just about. And in Africa, you drive on the best side of the road, it's as simple as that. I'm wondering if we couldn't incorporate certain things, I would suggest, I would reduce it to paper and submit it to the, the operations manager.
Yeah, I think anything like that in writing would be welcome at, at the city and we're always open to new ideas. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, just for the, we've, the manager of engineering services would be the person to be dealing with this and what we would be doing with it is, in 2014, if we do, if we are successful in the grant, the engineer would be looking at all of those things, the traffic control, the utilizing, traffic calming, all those components on there. And further to that, we've, we've got two intersections that we, where council wants us to look at, where you have the one over on Second Avenue, and then Interforce come forward and asked if we would participate with them in taking a closer look at Second and 60, 68.
Is it 72nd perhaps?
So we wanted to look at that to see what we can do to, there's two intersections that we have to look at council's assets, to look at one of them, and we're going to do that for 2014, there's a budget and budget for that, and we're also going to be looking at the other intersection at Second and 68.
I would suggest also there are many more intersections which could be looked at in order to give the speed and flow of traffic to be slowed down, but at the same time regulated at a steady speed, because that's the way you're going to save fuel. And also, I was, as I mentioned to you, I, I tried to do some calculations on sort of bare ass guesses, as I would say, of how much we might be able to save regarding fuel usage with people within the city of not being forced to supposedly stop at every stop sign.
More yield signs?
More yield and, and roundabouts perhaps, and, and traffic calm and things like that. There are ways of making ourselves, making our life a lot, lot easier.
And further, Mr. Mayor, just in that, when we were, when we were talking about the workshop, a lot of municipalities are struggling with, you know, where they're spending their money. Now they're looking at from their asset management piece, because asset management just isn't about managing your assets, it, it reaches everything you do in your organizations, delivery of service, service expectation, service levels, that, that reflects the costs of owning and gaining your assets. So as we look at those different things, that's where we have to fit into the, into our scale, the workshop with council later on this year is to figure out the level of service that we'd like to have. Because that determines, you know, does the grass get cut every week or is every two weeks? Fine. How does that affect the, the community? What type of services do they want to see and what don't they want to see? And these types of things. Well, we've moved some things around, we'll be working with the community a little bit further on that, but it is a good point that has to be addressed. Somewhere along the line, there has to be a plan to target some of those things, so.
My last point actually is quickie, actually, rather cynical, I'm afraid, I have difficulty parking here because there are so many city vehicles and RDKB, RDKB vehicles parked in the car park. Anyway, no doubt people who have used their private cars, if they haven't used city and RDKB, RDKB vehicles.
Well, and clearly the RDKB is pushed in here at times, they're short of office space themselves, so we're really appreciative that they've allowed it in here for Denver to use.
Yeah.
Further, Mr. Onigan? No? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
That's all right, I was rushing behind the screen. You've got, we have a year behind us now with Kitchen Waste Recycling or Redirection Program. Is there going to be any kind of report? I was curious whether anybody's collecting information about, do we have more bears coming to town this fall? Because that, that could be social networking, it could be something more, I don't know, I was wondering if anybody's collecting information and flies, researching this kind of stuff. What I've found is that in areas in the lower mainland where they've been using this Kitchen Waste Recycling, there is people who, there are people who feel like they're breeding more flies and they're attracting rats, et cetera. So I'm wondering if there's been anybody tracking it?
Yes, I can tell you that the regional district is keeping very close track of what comes out of that program. They weigh it sometimes, they do various kinds of testing to make sure that what they're telling us in terms of the diversion is actually accurate. As far as the bears go, if you check with conservation, you'll find that although we had three bears put down here recently, which kind of got a flurry going, that's not unusual at all for this area. Christina Lake has way more.
And they all use the green bins, I understand.
So, you know, clearly I can't see tying the bear issue to the green. We've had a couple of green bins batted around with it, but really it stood the test of security with bears, so.
A lot of anecdotes that would argue against that.
You can expect to get a yearly report on this, so and I will ask the regional district for the stats and in terms of how successful we've been in diverting. What we're looking at right now is that the regional district is being pressured by myself and council wires to expand their program, to include some of the institutional resources that, that we think that, you know, this is kind of like shutting a barn door here with people and residential, when some of the biggest uses are the school and the hospital and the seniors home and places like that, that should be willing to do this. So that's the direction of the green bin program and I hope that would be in the annual report.
Okay, and I'm, just in doing the research, one of the things I noticed, and I've seen this in news reports, in RDKB's own informational video about the green bin program, is that people don't use bin liners. Seven out of 10 people in town who, me just asking a guy in a truck, don't use bin liners. And when you don't use a bin liner, if you don't hose out your green bin afterwards, it's got a bunch of stinky decomposing cheese on the inside that basically makes it into a, an olfactory billboard for all the animals that have good smell or noses to find, whoa, maybe there's something to eat here. And if you look at the reproductive cycle time for flies, it's less than a week.
I think we should caution people about the urgency, the need to clean out the green bins.
Just a pointer, that's all, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And a motion to adjourn, council.